Good morning. I would like to call to order the September 5, 2019, business meeting. And with that, Administrator Schmidt, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support today: Stephen Madcor, County Counsel; Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board; Chair Bernard and Commissioner Savis are out of the office today and will not be attending, so Vice Chair Fisher will be chairing today's meeting. With that, our roll call: Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Fisher.
Here.
With that, will you please join me at the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Administrator Schmidt, I believe we have a presentation this morning.
Yes, Chair. We are recognizing the 2019 Outstanding Member Agency Award to Water Environment Services from the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies. Todd Logan from Public and Government Affairs will present.
Good morning. Whew, that is pretty.
Good morning. So Commissioners, as the PGA representative for Water Environment Services, I was thrilled to find out that on July 26, Water Environment Services received the 2019 Outstanding Member Agency Award from the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies, better known as Aqua. The award is given out annually by Aqua, which has more than 100 member agencies. I have with me, just right back there, Greg Geist, the Director of Water Environment Services, to talk a bit about Aqua and the award, followed by Ron Waringa, who can give you an update on the Carley Project, which was specifically recognized by Aqua. At the conclusion, I'm hoping to get a photo.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Greg Geist. I'm the Director of Water Environment Services. It's a pleasure to be here today. I feel like, once again, we're talking about our Carley Creek Project, which has brought, frankly, an embarrassment of riches when it comes to awards and recognitions, but it's well deserved. I think this one is particularly meaningful for us because it comes from our peers: Portland, and Eugene, and Bend, and Corvallis, and the folks that have seen West kind of grow and prosper and be able to accomplish projects like this. And the Carley Project, I think, really pushed us over the top for this award, and so it's especially meaningful to me and the staff at West. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ron.
Great. Thanks, Greg. And again, Ron Waringa with Water Environment Services, and good morning. And here we are again. This is our third award for this project, and actually, we're going to be getting another award at the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Agency, Clean Water Association Conference, I think it's next week, for innovation in stormwater management. So we're proud to represent the project and talk to you about it today. For more for the audience, just talk a little bit about the project. It's a stormwater treatment wetland that's in the Clackamas Industrial Area, adjacent to Carley Creek. The project involved constructing that wetland and creating an extensive piping network to bring runoff to it, and also had a stream restoration component for Carley Creek itself. It works to remove pollution from stormwater runoff, and it improves water quality in Carley Creek and the Clackamas River, which we know is a drinking water source for hundreds of thousands of people, and it improves habitat for imperiled salmon and steelhead that still call Carley Creek home. So that's what the project is. We're still working on it. The work's not over. We put over 70,000 plants in the ground that we need to make sure survive. We have permit obligations over the next five years, so we'll continue to manage the site and make sure it gets established and functions. I was asked to say a little bit about what this means to me and my team. And as Greg said, for the organization, you know, the award is really for West. It recognizes the Carley Project, but I think what it leaves us with is, to be frank, a feeling of surprise to get awards like this. And we're not surprised that our dedicated and committed team delivered, you know, such a great project. We're not surprised at the leadership that you, as the Board, have demonstrated over the years, and as Greg, as our Department Director, has offered us. What we are surprised about is that we don't really do these projects for awards like this. The project is good. It's much needed. It serves a great purpose, and we do it because our staff are dedicated to making sure that it happens. We grind out the challenges. We troubleshoot the day-to-day stuff. You know, whether it's delays, or change orders, or costs going up, we frankly worry about the uncertainty. And we do it just because we know that it's our duty and it's our job to do the project. So when we get an award like this, it reminds us that other people see value in it as well, and we don't always think about that. So it's humbling. It makes us feel good. It's very meaningful, and we want to, again, thank you for your unwavering support for the project, and we're really proud of this. Thanks.
Well, thank you so much. I know that one of our greatest pleasures is to go and experience and ribbon-cut and dedicate, and being there at Carley Creek was quite a moment of celebration, and just to reflect on how critical water is as our life force. So thank you for coming and sharing, and it's good. Anything else anybody wants to say about this?
Well, I think we're going to be seeing you at the River Cleanup, which is what, Sunday? Yep. So are you floating down the river this time?
You know, I really should float down the river. Is it too late to sign up?
I believe we have extra spots.
Oh, good. Okay, West carpool.
West carpool, okay.
You want to come, Ken?
I think this was one I was not going to be able to make this year.
Oh, all right.
That's right.
I have before, but unfortunately, this year, the calendar went crazy, so I won't be able to do it this year. But I did want to congratulate you on the work that you have done. We do take seriously, as a county commissioner, and I think our staff throughout the county takes seriously our commitment to environmental stewardship and doing things the right way and as environmentally sensitive as possible. So thank you very much for the work. It is well deserved, what you did. I just look forward to someday being able to stroll around in that wetland and see animals and birds and whatnot there as a result of the work that you've done. So thank you.
All right, and a photo?
Sure.
Okay.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. One more, please.
Of course, you're a photographer.
Three, two, one. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to citizen communication, and I believe we have Julie Mast and Les Poole. If you could come up.
Oh, yeah, we called two up at a time.
I'm up to a good start. She's afraid to sit next to me.
Oh, you're harmless.
I'm just nervous.
That's all right.
Les, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I'll show you how. I'm Les Poole. I live in Clackamas County, and always good to be able to come in and speak. It's been a great summer. Frankly, I'm so pleased to announce that my property up in Wasco County didn't burn, didn't come close this year. The days when it was raining and people were talking about, "Oh, summer's over." Well, summer's not over, and we were really lucky. I think we dodged a bullet, and I'm working real hard on the whole wildfire issue. And the only way we're going to get there is if there's some genuine, objective understandings between groups and interests that it is caused by a number of things, including mismanagement. There have been some poor logging practices in the past, droughts. The idea that it's all caused by global warming is a fantasy. The idea that the Forest Service, the state, and the government is properly managing everything and managing the fires, that's also, that's a fantasy. So we've got a lot of work to do because next year it'll probably be hot, and next year we won't dodge a bullet. And I'm just gravely concerned because regardless of anyone's opinion about the environment, Oregon is precious. If Oregon wasn't precious, I wouldn't be down here. So I encourage everyone, and I'm not talking to just the folks in front of me, to get educated about what are the lead issues with our fires. And don't jump in a camp where it's all caused by this or all caused by that. It's all George Bush's fault. No, wait a minute. It's Obama's fault. Oh, no. I'm behind the times. It's Donald Trump's fault. He's the reason we're having the fires. So you know I'm having a little fun in saying that, but I'm quite serious in my message, and I'm going to continue to work on that, and hopefully, anything that the county does on that issue, on that issue, resonates with the state because whatever Salem decides is going to have a big influence on how we manage our forests and what we do in terms of encouraging forest industries. And with that, I've got 22 seconds left, and I'd like to donate that to the lady next to me.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. I'm Julie Mast, and I live in West Lynn, and I live adjacent to a proposed soccer facility that's going, that Willamette United is trying to get placed right along my property line. So I wanted to come before you to make you aware of an interpretation decision that was made in December of 2017 that affects all RRF-5 land in our county. Willamette United would like to get a world-class soccer facility that also, it's not just soccer, it's a multi-sport complex, that includes three turf fields, over 250 parking spaces, with the adjacent church parking also, so there's over, well over 500 parking spaces available. And the size of the training facility is over 50,000 square feet, the size of a large retail facility. This type of development in RRF-5 has never been done before, and while there has been facilities of this nature in Clackamas County, like, you know, sports fields of that nature, never in the RRF-5 zoning and never outside of the urban growth boundary, and also, to my knowledge, I shouldn't say this, to my knowledge, never without restrictions on noise or lights. So first of all, when this was first put up, no one except the CPOs were mailed notification of this land-altering decision. This was only put into the hands of so few, and the impacts on all of my fellow residents in Clackamas County living in RRF-5 land were made totally unaware. I did a formal records request and found that all the CPOs unanimously opposed the complex, or this interpretation, rather, and in this record, I found letters of opposition that made excellent cases for the land, the safety, and how this facility doesn't fit into our rural life. I'm running out of time, so I'm going to skip ahead of why it doesn't fit into our rural life. During the hearing for the CUP, the Conditional Use Permit, the applicant's attorney said they would have never moved forward without this nod of assurance from our planning department in this county, that this interpretation was their way to get the development through. And there's something that doesn't feel quite right about this. During the appeal process, I had called the county, and they said it was not land-specific on this interpretation, when in fact, I know that they knew the plans and where they were, where Willamette United was planning to put this. On December 26, I also called to put in an appeal, and Glenn Hamburg, who is seeing to it, seeing to this interpretation, did not leave a forwarding phone mail. I asked for a late appeal. It was denied. Most of all, this interpretation was a huge countywide decision. It was left to be decided by so few, and the CPOs that did oppose it were not listened to. We just want you to be made aware of this interpretation and how it has left all of our RRF-5 residents hung out to dry and feels like it was snuck through the back door. These urban-scale sports facilities will have a negative impact on the small amount of farmland left. Oh.
Keep going.
Okay, sorry. I asked that you consider amending the code to make it clear that active recreation use should be in rural character. I live right next to this. Every time that my husband is home from work, he will be hearing whistles. The lights will be on, stadium lighting on until 9 and 10 o'clock at night. This is an abuse of a conditional use, and it laughs in the face of our comprehensive plan to save or to preserve the rural atmosphere of Clackamas County. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And I believe Commissioner Humberston would like to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe there's a hearing scheduled before the hearing officer.
Yeah, we already had that. That's what I was saying, how the attorney for Willamette United, the applicant, had said that she felt like there was a nod of assurance from the county. I just feel like there's been a lack of transparency in the planning department on this case. It's very clearly common sense that in a rural atmosphere, that there wouldn't be stadium lighting and three turf fields and a huge recreational center that's the size of a superstore. The use is also, it would be better for us as neighbors if this was a Parlumber or if it was a Walmart, quite frankly, because at least then you have operating, not Walmart, they're open too late, but something where it's closed at 5 o'clock. So when my husband's home, working on our farm outside, he will never be on our property. Or this, I'm speaking for actually all, this is not just, I'm speaking to all, I'm speaking for all of the RRF-5 residents. This interpretation makes it very clear and very easy for these developments to get put anywhere in our county, and especially the rural. I know that...
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand. Are you telling me that a decision has already been made to approve it? Because to the best of my knowledge, that's not the case.
No, 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 but the, absolutely, no. It has not been, in fact, the 12th is our deadline, and so, and then the hearing officer, there's a Luba appeal also as well. And so I don't think they can move forward until that is cleared up.
Right.
What I'm asking is for the interpretation part of this, where they admitted that they got a nod of assurance from the county that that be looked at to protect all of rural RRF-5 land moving forward, not even so much in this case.
Well, if I may, I would be careful with someone telling, with their own axe to grind, telling you that they got a nod of assurance. That may or may not have occurred. I do know that the decision will be made by the hearing officer, that this board does...
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm sorry if I clouded the issue. I'm sorry. The interpretation is leaving all of, all of the Clackamas County residents, anyone who lives on RRF-5 land, it's leaving them vulnerable to these sorts of developments in the future. So I just ask that you look at that interpretation and see that it's not a wide-open door, so other people like me, even a couple of years down the line, not necessarily are, you know, obviously, this is near and dear to my heart. So I apologize if I've gotten emotional, but I would like at least the interpretation to be looked at so it doesn't leave other citizens vulnerable like we are.
Would you leave that information with our clerk, please, so I can see it?
Yeah. I didn't really bring a lot of information. Can I email it to you?
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
Oh, that's okay. No, I just wanted to say I am aware of this. It was brought to my attention the other day, so anything you could send us would be, I think, appreciated. What I have been hearing is it's highly likely there will be a Luba appeal for this particular piece. Normally, again, goes through the hearing process. It doesn't really, when citizens bring something to our attention, you know, we'll take a closer, obviously, closer look, but the decision is actually going to be, which you understand, obviously, that process of hearing, there's more than likely going to be an appeal. And one of the things that I've heard that I want to share with my colleagues is that part of the problem, evidently, there's been a lot of activity of conditional use kinds of things happening where you folks live. And so that's, that's kind of, there seems to be a tipping point with that. But I do want to tell you, in defense of our planning department, they are very transparent. They really try and get the word out as much as possible.
And I know they're very busy. I mean, they, and they are doing a hard job. I don't, I just, and I apologize for nodding.
Oh, don't feel bad. It's, I would just strongly suggest, though, the points of contact with the community planning organizations, the Hamlet, those areas, because they are really kind of the designated folks that we actually train as volunteers in the community to be the touchpoint for a lot of this. So...
It's hard to have faith in that when every single one of them, then every single one of them said no to this, and it was not listened to. And so it's really frustrating. And these, these are not crazy NIMBY people, not in my backyard. These are really thoughtful responses about our environment. You know, anyway, I notice I've gone way over...
No, I agree with you, and that's one of the reasons we have them. So they're not left, so people aren't left that this is a no, and they're, and that is going to be taken into account as it goes through a process. We can't guarantee an outcome, obviously, but they will be, it'll be part of the record.
So I do have a question, real quickly. Can you change the zoning so this interpretation is at least has more restrictions on it, so it's so not, so wide open to all the citizens that live in RRF-5? I mean, there's a difference. They ask for soccer fields, and they have a stadium and three stadium lights, turfs lit up until 10 o'clock at night. I mean, that is not the feel of a rural environment. So if there's anything in zoning that you can help with, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I need to check on, double-check on this, but I don't believe we can change the zoning in that area now that it is part of the urban reserves.
Urban reserve, okay.
So I think that it has to stay that way. I can double-check on that. The other thing is, I did want you to know that the Farm Bureau has taken a position, I believe, in opposition also. So you're, CPOs are not the only organizations that were made aware and are not the only organizations that have presented data to the hearing officer. So that has occurred.
And Administrator Schmidt?
Yes, if you don't mind emailing us your information and your contact information, we'll get back to you. Our Director of that Department's sitting right behind you, maybe, if you want, after the meeting. Dan, right there, can catch up with you. But if you could send us information, we'll definitely follow up, let you know what's possible.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. We are moving right along to our consent agenda, and I will do that very slowly so Mary can get back to her seat. Excellent. Thank you.
Today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives, and the Community Development Division for the Emergency Solution Grant Funding for the Annie Ross Homeless Shelter Service, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives and the Community Development Division for Emergency Solutions Grant Funding for the Home Base Rapid Rehousing Services. H3S Continue, approval to apply for a grant from Portland General Electric Drive Change Fund to advance the electrification of the elderly and disabled transportation network, approval to apply to the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs for the fiscal year 2020 distribution of funds. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a board order accepting and acknowledging right-of-way and simultaneously vacating Schmidt Road, not Gary Schmidt.
It's not my road, I mean.
Number 2, approval declaring the, a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose of acquisition of right-of-way easement and fee property for the South Central Point Road and South New Era Road Intersection Realignment Project and authorizing good-faith negotiations and condemnation actions. Approval of a Federal Lands Access Program Project Memorandum of Agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the East Salmon River Road Surface Preservation Project. Approval of a Federal Lands Access Program Project Grant Agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the Low-Low Pass Road Stabilization and Surface Preservation Project. And approval of a contract with Kerr Contractors Oregon, Inc. for the realignment of Victory Road at Forsyth Road. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an annual operating and financial plan with the U.S. Forest Service for cooperative law enforcement services in the Mount Hood National Forest. Under Disaster Management, approval of an amended subrecipient agreement with the City of Portland for purchase and reimbursement activities related to the use of fiscal year 17 U.S. Department of Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the City of Happy Valley to provide work crew services. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the City of Gladstone to provide work crew services. And under Human Resources, retroactive approval of the 2018 Agreements with Providence Health Plan for Administrative Services for Clackamas County Self-Funded Medical Benefits. Under Water Environment Services, approval of the Utility Easement Agreement between Water Environment Services and Portland General Electric Company at Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Water Environment Services and Clackamas Community College for watershed health education field trips. And approval of a contract with Care Rolo Engineers for the Willamette Facility Plan. And that concludes today's consent agenda. Thank you, Mary. Any member of our commission want to remove an item or have any questions? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Go ahead, Ken. I'll second.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. So moving on now to the county administrator update.
Yes, Commissioners. First, I'd like to start by sharing, while you were on your Board recess between August 19 and 30, I signed six contracts on your behalf, which county code allows me to do, per Appendix C-104. And they are for business and community services. Are you ready? I'm going to do this fast. Approval of a contract with CXT Incorporated for the purchase of a pre-cast concrete restroom at Metzler Park. For Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing and Community Development Division and the City of Sandy for ADA sidewalk improvements on Southeast Sandy. Approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas County's Children's Commission to provide a Help Me Grow liaison. Approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide a bilingual Help Me Grow liaison. Approval of a local grant agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission to provide evidence-based parenting education classes. And approval of a local grant agreement with Immigrant Refugee Community Organization to provide evidence-based parenting education classes. All of these funds were non-general fund funds, and the staff reports I provided to you earlier this week for your information. So just for the record, I'm announcing, per the county code, I approved these six agreements on your behalf while you were on recess. Do you have any questions or comments about that?
No.
All right. I would like to also share some good news that's happening here in Clackamas County. First, Liz McKenzie, so Liz, would you please come to the testimony table? She does not want to speak. You don't have to speak, but if you could come forward so we can recognize you. Liz recently retired from Clackamas County Transportation Maintenance after 26 years in transportation maintenance and a few additional years prior, serving as a temporary employee at Clackamas County. Liz is the first woman in Clackamas County's history to retire as a transportation maintenance... Liz is the first woman in Clackamas County's history to retire as a transportation maintenance employee. So, Liz, thank you. Congratulations. She served with dedication and professionalism during our evolving time for women in a mostly male-dominated workforce. During her tenure, Liz modeled professionalism, service, while protecting and maintaining our road network. She did a little bit of everything, including cutting brush, sweeping roads, patching potholes, and she constantly received accolades from the public for her superb performance. So, Liz, on behalf of Clackamas County, thank you for your dedicated service, and we wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement, and just wanted to publicly recognize you and thank you for your work.
I appreciate it.
I do want to give credit to the Road Department, because that has been my life for the last 20-something years. I've been there since 1989. Usually, I don't speak much, and I'm kind of shy about doing so. But, that, I got a good boss. I've had nice few years, have been the best parts of my career there, and it was tough. I'm not going to tell you it was all a picnic, because I was a woman coming in there, and I think there was two other women at the time. And over the years, it's got better as it went along, and I'm very proud of the Road Department, very proud of it, because we do a lot of work out there. And I always reminded myself that who I actually work for, no matter who signs my paycheck, I work for John Doe, and I'm one of them. You know, so I always reminded myself of that. And when I went out to do my job, I did the best I could to make them proud of me, out there and in here. That's my boss, Randy Harmon, which is one of the best bosses I've ever had.
Ooh. So nice.
And I wish you all the luck.
Commissioner Humberson?
I was just thinking that, given when you started and the circumstances back then, that besides modeling the other attributes that Mr. Schmidt mentioned, I'll bet you had a lot of patience, too.
Is that thing on? Yes, you did learn patience. But you know, there was one man that used to run that at DIT, and he actually ended up being my best friend. His name was Dave Phillips. And I'll never forget the day that I got hired, when I heard him say, "I'm hiring that woman because she'll work." That made me proud. And I told him, I said, "I'll make you proud." And I've been trying to do it ever since.
Good for you.
No, I, I love the Road Department, and like I said, I didn't retire because I don't like it. I retired because I'm getting older and I'm getting tired. So, there comes a time when you got to admit to yourself, you know, you got to go. That's the way it is. But no, I'm wishing all of them, all up in the world, if they get to move up on the hill, and wish you everything, all of you. I do. And a lot of them have called me, believe it or not, a lot of the fellows called me when they knew if I'm okay, where are you? And they weren't there, they went on vacation. So, it made me feel proud.
Congratulations.
It's a good bunch of people, I know. It's really a good bunch of people.
Yes. So, what are, what are you going to do in retirement?
Oh, my God, I got a small, little, tiny farm. Oh, believe me, it's a never-ending, and it's just me. I haven't rested since I've been off. I'm going to be mighty tired, just a desperate, the whole day spraying weeds. So, to me, it's, it's like a thing with me, I, I got to work. It's, I, I never stop. I, I can't help it. It's just, it's just born in me, I guess, or bred in me, whichever. But, yeah, I got a lot to do. I won't have to worry about not having nothing to do. Got a lot to work, but, like I said, I, I'm just proud of where I come, where I worked, and I'm proud of the county, I'll be honest. And Clackamas County, to me, is where I raised my family and everything, so. And I want, I want them all to, everything.
That's a pretty good speech for somebody who wasn't going to talk.
Well, I feel comfortable with you people, so, you know. But usually, I'll get in front of a crowd, and I go find me a spot to hide in, to be honest.
Yeah, great.
Well, I think that's enough.
Dan, do you want to say anything? You, you've said a lot, and it's really interesting. You know, it's, the first time we, at your retirement, we talked about the first time that we talked, and one of the things that I really took away from Liz is not only the, the pride that she takes in her work, but it's also the pride and the caring that she had for her fellow employees. The first time we met was actually, we do a Thanksgiving lunch, and she came up and asked me a simple request if I could take two simple plates full of food back to folks who couldn't be there. And she was concerned about the plates, and we started talking about that, and, and it was just kind of an eye-opening experience that I had with her. And it was just, it's just a pleasure. I mean, you, she talks about the work. It is hard work. It is hard, hard work, and there are elements there out and in, and it's, and on a daily basis, doing the good work for the citizens of Clackamas County. And it is an exciting time to honor somebody who's been with us for that long, doing that kind of work. And it's exciting for you to move on to that next chapter of your life. Have fun on your farm.
Thank you.
Just too bad Chair Bernard isn't here. You guys could reminisce and talk about farm stories.
Yeah.
Well, like I say, if she's done brush cutting, I know what kind of work that is. I've done my fair share of it, so that's hard work.
So, thank you, Liz. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time to do this.
Commissioners, another retirement, as you know, he's not here today, but Chuck Robbins retired last week after 40 years working for Clackamas County, all in Health, Housing and Human Services. He was hired in March 1979.
Oh, my God.
He served as the direct, Division Director for, in several positions, including the Housing Authority and Community Development. Some of his accomplish, accomplishments, and he has many, are the community development team during his tenure provided over $27 million of community development block grants that supported more than 3,000 households in Clackamas County, and the county invested $17.5 million in federal home funds to develop 35 affordable housing projects in 13 different communities during his time. Chuck said at his retirement, he's never found better people to work with than here at Clackamas County. So, I know that we all wish Chuck his very best in his retirement as well. Some other good news, last month, the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District saw its credit rating raised from a, a double A minus to a double A, which is a step up. This is followed by an annual review of Standard and Poor's Global Ratings. This affirms a stable outlook for the district, and the rating is a positive reflection, reflection of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District's solid financial health. These credit ratings help enhance transparency and demonstrate creditworthiness. So, a great job to our Parks Team for their role in helping make our district operations run so smoothly. Finally, we got big news, as you know, commissioners, from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, who awarded Clackamas County $1.7 million to help end youth homelessness. This grant was provided to Clackamas County, one of only 23 governments in the nation that received one of these awards, from the Housing and Urban Development Youth Homelessness Demonstration Grant Program. Clackamas County will use this money to build local systems and support a wide range of housing programs aimed at youth, including rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, and traditional housing, among other efforts. So, thank you to our Health, Housing and Human Services Team for their always fine work in applying for and securing this very important grant. Reminder, there is no business meeting next Thursday, September 12th. We will not have a quorum, because our commissioners will be out doing good for the public of Clackamas County, which doesn't always mean they're here at the county, although that's important, but they'll be out and about in the community doing good work. So, no business meeting next Thursday, September 12th. That's my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Schmidt. We are now on to Commissioner Communication, and I believe that Commissioner Humberson is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, during our two-week hiatus, I basically spent most of my time at home, other than getting out to a variety of different community events and meeting with individual constituents. We got the house painted, so I helped out with that, and, and did a, a whole bunch of honeydews, which had built up over a period of time. But I was able to get out to Sandy, Beaver Creek, the Bull Run CPO, and Tecambi Bridging Cultures, and meet with constituents there. Also attended the Labor Day picnic, and a couple of three car shows, where, again, I get to spend a lot of time talking with constituents about county business. And then I had about a half a dozen individualized constituents' meetings. So, county, county business continued from, from my perspective, and I got a few things done around the house. And I'll leave it at that, and now it's time to go to the dogs.
Aw, cute.
So, this is introducing Snoopy. He's a confident little fellow with a big personality. He is six years old and is a smooth-coated Chihuahua. Snoopy would love to become part of your family today. For more information about Snoopy or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Okay, yeah, it's been a busy week, actually, getting back. I had an opportunity to visit my beautiful, beautiful, gorgeous grandchildren over our break, and that has always been a priority for me as a mother and grandmother. And I'm delighted to tell people, there's another little fellow on the way in December. So, I'll have a Christmas baby, too. So, that was, that was actually, it was a really wonderful break. I just love them all so much, and it got me all energized to come back to work here now, and really kind of put my nose to the grindstone. And I have had a week that has been just full of things. I was able to meet with Mike Hurley, who is kind of the Chair of Greater Portland, Inc., and will be working with the Portland Business Alliance and them to integrate services on business expansion for our region. So, that was a good, really good meeting. Much like my two colleagues, we attended the Great Labor Day picnic at Oaks Park. Good folk, good food, shows our support for labor and our union brothers and sisters and all the work that they do to make our communities better. So, that was a, that was a delightful piece. Also, I had a meeting with our Willamette Falls Locks State Commission. We had our leadership team meeting, discussing how we're really going to keep working to transfer the locks to, we hope, a public corporation and get that up and running as part of our economic development work that we do here in the county. So, that was good. And also with constituents, I've, this week, I've dealt with library issues, cell tower issues, land use issues, and I, and I do want to say that, please, please understand, folks, you can call us anytime. We have folks ready, and we try and get you right to the right contact to get your questions answered and your needs met. So, that's a real high priority for everybody on our commission. I guess one more thing I wanted to talk a little bit is about environmental stewardship. That seems to be the theme. This coming Sunday, we're going to be doing the river cleanup, which is just a great thing to do. I want to thank my colleagues, because yesterday they gave a two thumbs up to a pollination initiative, so, and I'm here to let you know that bats, birds, beetles, wasps, it's more than just bees, it's a whole host of things that we need to steward to make sure that pollination occurs and our food shed remains intact, and all kinds of good things. So, a lot of good environmental stewardship. And Dan Johnson actually sent me an email that I wanted to share, in that when I talked about what we call integrated pest management, and how we, how we manage weeds, how we manage, you know, infestations, we have a very, very highly-trained team from our Department of Transportation and Development that is highly-trained. They know when to apply things and when not to apply things. They are always out there being good stewards of the environment, using integrated pest management as a way to keep our environment clean, but also help control some of the things like noxious weeds that we need to do. So, Dan left, but I wanted to thank him for that. Oh, and I know Ken's going to probably talk about cross-laminated timber, I bet, so I'm going to leave that one to you, but let's go.
Not yet.
Not yet? Oh, not yet? Okay. So, Mary, should we do Word of the Week, or, for, okay? Okay. Word of the Week, Carpe Diem. It's Latin, and yeah, I know, that's a, that's a marine thing, too, isn't it, Ken?
Semper Fi. Yeah, that's also Latin, yes.
Well, it's, both of them are Latin, that much I know. And it means to relish the present and take joy now in the pleasure of life, rather than focusing on the future. Carpe Diem is Latin for seize the day. Helen Keller has a quote, "Life is either a great adventure or nothing." And I think I'm going to vote for the adventure guys for sure. Okay, Arts and Culture in the County? Milwaukee History Museum presents Milwaukee Kids, Saturday, September 7th, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Milwaukee History Museum in Milwaukee. The newest exhibit at the Milwaukee History Museum will showcase a collection of artifacts, stories, and photographs on the lives and times of youth. Well, this is really interesting, before the advent of computers and digital devices, my goodness. Exposing the Past Through Oregon City Photography, Saturday, September 7th, 11:30 to 5:30 p.m. Museum of the Oregon Territory here in Oregon City. And this is exposing the past through Oregon City Photography. The museum's latest exhibit focuses on all things photography from the lens of Oregon City photographers from 1850 to 1920. And for more information on other events, clackamasartsalliance.org. Don't forget to look on the websites of Clackamas Repertory Theater, and go to their plays, and also the Lakewood Center for the Arts. Okay, and then I know, hopefully, you'll say something about what Kirk's up to.
Oh, you always ask about Kirk. So, it's very exciting. They are, just started in production, beginning rehearsals for West Side Story. And we have the pleasure of housing in our home, three actors and the choreographer.
Oh, wow.
So, my life for the next few weeks, at least, is going to be very art-filled. I may start singing and dancing for everyone, because that will be my world for the next little bit.
Well, I'll bring over some homemade lasagna.
Ooh, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. So, today, Labor Day, and day after Labor Day, kids go back to school, so a lot of conversations about children. I'm sure folks have noticed that there has been more traffic. I've noticed some, unfortunately, some speeding Lakewood High School students coming down the hill near my house. But it's a time where we reflect on children, and I know in conversations that I've had children starting first grade, children starting preschool, parents feeling a little teary-eyed, little bit of concern about kids going off to school, and I've had more than one conversation this week about that. So, my mind has been on children, and of course, Commissioner Schrader visiting her grandchildren, I have my grandchildren. Children are our future. So, I just couldn't miss this opportunity to talk about, and reading the newspaper this morning, I don't know if folks saw it. It was kind of a disturbing paper, in a sense, because on the front here, we have the devastation in the Bahamas with all of the, the lost homes that are there because of Hurricane Dorian, which is very sobering when you look at, you know, what's important for families, for children, and for the folks there. We want to, heart goes out to, to everyone. And reading through the paper, there is an article from the Associated Press that, the title of the article is "Separations Traumatized Children: U.S. Report Finds." And so I just wanted to read just a little bit of this article today, because as county commissioners, we don't have the ability, other than our voice and our advocacy, to affect what's happening for children in this country when it comes to being separated from their parents. And Commissioner Schrader and I lament over this often, about what can we do? We advocate fiercely with our national association, which has said to the administration, "Do not continue to separate children and families." We continue to have this voice, but this report is worth sharing today. Separated from his father in the U.S.-Mexico border last year, the little boy, about seven or eight, was under the delusion that his dad had been killed, and he thought he was next. Other children believed their parents had abandoned them, and some suffered physical symptoms because of their mental trauma, clinicians reported to investigators with the government watchdog. "You get a lot of my chest hurts, even though everything is fine medically," a clinician told investigators. The children would describe emotional symptoms. "Every heartbeat hurts, or I can't feel my heart." Children separated during the Trump administration's zero-tolerance policy last year showed more fear, feelings of abandonment, and post-traumatic stress symptoms than children who were not separated, according to the report. The chaotic reunification process only added to their ordeal. Some cried inconsolably. Some were angry and confused. Other children expressed feelings of fear or guilt, or became concerned for their parents' welfare, according to this report. So, I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, because all of our children matter. All of our children are the future of our state, our community, our country, and our hearts need to reach out and care. So, I appreciate the opportunity to have this time with my colleagues to share.
Thank you so much, because this, it's just become intolerable. I can't even imagine it. I really can't. I, I stay awake at night wondering what we can do. I, it's... I, I stay awake and I wonder what we can do. We can't let something that is so inhumane continue. So thank you for bringing that forward.
We keep speaking and encouraging people in the community to connect, to get informed, take care, to contact their congressional leaders and the, the federal administration. And so with that, we are adjourned.